Good evening and welcome to the Long Polk City Council meeting. Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Holmdahl?
Here.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Present.
Councilmember Lingle?
Here.
Mayor Protem Ashley Costa?
Present.
Mayor Johnlin?
Here. Well, since there's no one here, we won't have much oral communication, but this is your moment if you'd been here. And we will be, this evening, having a closed session in the employee break room. The business items will be a discussion with labor negotiators with regard to the city-designated representatives Beth Flam, Overbebrad, Wilkie, Colin Tanner; employee organizations, the Long Polk Police Officers Association, the International Association of Firefighters, Long Polk Local 1906, and the Long Polk Employees Association. There will also be a conference with real property negotiators regarding assessor's parcel number 085033001; city negotiators Kevin McEwen, Laurel Barcelona, and Joseph Panoni negotiating Parshy's Pacific Commercial Bank under negotiation price and terms of payment; the same folks, assessor's parcel number 085033007; the negotiating parties, Level 3 Communications. I will not be participating in either of these items because I have a piece of property right across the street. And that's all there is to report.
Mr. Mayor, I want to make the correction that Mr. Panoni will not be here.
Well, he's the negotiator, but he won't be participating in this. June Allen, who are his able partner in crime, no, uncrime, is here with us this evening. So, as a matter of fact, for this item, why don't you guys do the property negotiations first, and then call me when you're done with that, and we'll go to labor. Okay? All right, let's go. Everybody can take a seat, please. Okay, our report from closed session is, we don't have a reportable action yet, but we're still working on it. And now, if you'd all please rise and join me for the invocation from Pastor Denton.
Almighty Creator, we come to you from a variety of different backgrounds. Some of us call you by different names, and we are all inadequate to comprehend the fullness of your majesty and grace. But we do share the same basic conviction that all that exists in creation is the product of your creative intellect and your gracious and benevolent care. We thank you for this planet on which we dwell, for this free land in which we reside, and for the special privilege of dwelling in this beautiful valley. As our elected representatives begin now the process of dealing with the nuts and bolts of maintaining this particular community, we pray for them a sense of your presence, your sustaining grace, and your guidance. Amen and amen.
And if you'd join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now, our city administrators report.
Mr. Mayor, city council members, and community audience, thank you for this opportunity to report on two items. First, I'm pleased to report that we received today results of the state comptroller's audit on the Long Polk Redevelopment Agency asset transfer review. And bottom line is that we received a clean bill of health without findings. And in the cover letter, it says, "Our review found that the Long Polk Redevelopment Agency transferred a total of 14 million or 100 percent in assets to the successor agency as required." So that's very good news. The second item, our Long Polk Fire Department brush truck crew has been deployed over the past few weeks fighting the front lines on recent wildfires, the White Fire and the Powerhouse Fire in Los Angeles. And Chief Ladapow is here today to give you an update.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. For the third time in less than 30 days, last Friday, our crew formed up as part of a strike team, and this time, they headed down to the LA area. They've been on that fire every single night since they left Friday. Tonight is the first night they're not on the fire. They are what's called, in my business, they've been declared excess, so they get to stay in camp tonight, and we anticipate they'll be home tomorrow night. However, the fire that they were on most recently has consumed over 32,000 acres. This evening, it's 65 percent contained. 16 homes were destroyed, and 24 outbuildings were destroyed. They have well over 2,000 people on this fire. So, we've been in close contact with them, they've been doing a great job, I've been getting lots of positive reports, and we're anxious to get them back home so we can clean the rig up so it can go again.
I might suggest a round of applause for them.
Okay.
Thank you, Chief.
Anything else, administrator?
Well, I have one announcement to make. Today's Long Polk record includes a very nice article in the sports section reporting that yesterday, Cabrillo's Rebecca Miranda, daughter of our city administrative aide, Laura Miranda, signed a letter of intent to attend UC Irvine where she will compete in track for the UC Irvine Anteaters. And so, congratulations to Rebecca and Laura, as well as her family members. And this is a significant achievement. The record notes Rebecca is one of the most decorated student athletes in school history, and she played All-Stars on three different sports teams. So, congratulations, Rebecca.
The question is, where do we get a stuffed anteater for her mom? By tomorrow. Yeah. They were our crosstown rivals when I was in school. Somehow, we just never got that anteater part. Okay, any staff requests or announcements beyond? Nope? Okay. And now, we have oral communications. We have oral communications. This is your opportunity to talk to us about an item that's not on the agenda, or if you can't stay for the item on the agenda that you're here for, then talk to us now. And if it is an item on the consent calendar, this would be your moment also.
Members of the council, Mr. Mayor, the subjects I wanted to-
Need to state your name.
I'm sorry. Lynn, L-Y-N-N. Jess Lindley, L-I-N-D, L-E-Y.
Thank you.
The subject I want to address is the deplorable wages of our police officers and firemen. And the number of officers leaving this department to go to Santa Maria and other areas because of wage and benefit issues. They also leave for other reasons, but that's the main thrust of what I'm trying to say. I've got comparisons here. I know you've all heard this before. It's nothing new. There's a lot of things in the works, and we hope they all go through. The one thing you may not know is that our dispatchers, our 911 dispatchers in town, make 65 percent less than any other dispatchers in the county. And that's a high-stress job. You've got to know what you're doing, you're sending the correct personnel to a certain type of call. It's very stressful, I can only imagine. So, I think it'd take a range of science to figure out these guys need to be paid a reasonable wage. I mean, if I was making a thousand bucks a month, and they said, "Well, you're going to get a 65 percent pay reduction," I mean, you'd be looking at about four something a month. It's not getting it. Let's get real. So, basically, that's in essence, and again, I know you all have heard this before, it's an ongoing problem. Santa Maria is the biggest competition because they pay better wages and have better benefits. They also have, excuse me. They also have a higher sales tax rate, which generates more dollars. I would pursue, first of all, raising our sales tax by a quarter percent. It's not a lot of money, or even a half percent. It's not going to kill anybody that's going shopping to pay a half percent, eight and a half percent sales tax. It would raise, in my mind, possibly enough money to hire new officers. They don't need, their equipment's pretty good, so there's not any problem there. You know, it's just, it's the bottom line is, God forbid, any of you, any of us have to call 911 for any reason, and an officer, an ambulance, a fire department are going to show up and possibly save your life. What's more important than that? I think there's some programs in the city that can be trimmed, the fat can be trimmed from. I don't know what they are, I don't know how much fat you can trim. I know times are tough everywhere, for all cities, but I think more research, whatever it takes, into programs that maybe not all that, not as important as first responders could be whittled down a little bit. That's my opinion. I also think every one of you on the council, the mayor's already done it, Dr. Hinden, should go on a ride along with a police officer, if you haven't already done so, and just see how they work. Get an idea of the pressures they have, everything else. So, it's a very dangerous job, both fire department and police, and I think they should be compensated for that. I don't think that's any big thing to ask. Losing officers to another department because of wage and benefit issues doesn't make any So, sales tax, I guess it would be one of the better, maybe a half point, a half percent. Wouldn't be the most popular thing to do.
Need to wrap up.
Okay. Wouldn't be the most popular thing to do, but I think it would give the police and fire departments the monies they need to keep on doing a good job. This is a great department.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Pastor Doug Conley, and I am here to speak on the resolution for the City of Promise homeless shelter. And I felt it was beneficial to me to let you know what's been happening the last couple of weeks. One of the highlights is we were able to move one of our gentlemen, he was able to get a place to live, he had been working full-time now, he has been able to move out and establish himself on his own. Really sad, when he left, he didn't want to leave, and he kept hanging around, and I was just amazed at the friendship that it built. The second thing, Ashley had, Ashley Costa, I'm sorry, had mentioned about us working with the C-3H. I've had three meetings with Jeff already, and today, he faxed me the, I guess what he would call the handbook, but this is for South County, and so, he's asked if I will begin to work with him, and we will create one for North County, and so, we're in the process of doing that. We have begun that process. The thing that really was exciting is, at the appeals meeting, Kathy was here, and she has the Markable U organization, of which I did not even know it was in Long Polk until she spoke at that meeting. Since the meeting, some of us from our congregation have already joined, we've already, two weeks, going to classes, and we now make it mandatory that the people that stay at our shelter, starting Monday, they will be choosing classes and going three times a week. And so, I just wanted to report back that we're doing what you ask us to do, and things are going really well. And just to throw in about the police department, after the appeals meeting on Tuesday, I'm attending the Citizens Police Academy. We just finished our seventh or eighth week. I got to drive the police car, and that was the highlight of my days in Long Polk. I got to turn the siren on, the lights, and I had total fun. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Come on down.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor, council members, my name is Robyn Dunnett, and I'm here to speak in support of the victim's advocate position with Long Polk Police Department, and how important I feel this position is on our community. I speak from personal experience as my brother-in-law was murdered just outside of town in 1985. No such position existed at that time. We were fortunate, though. Our family had resources, we had a lot of support that we could turn to, that guided us through the legal system and provided us the answers and what we needed. Many victims were and are not as fortunate as we were. In fact, many victims lack resources just due to the crime that has been committed to them. And without assistance, without an advocate to guide them through the legal system, without someone to speak when they are unable, they become victims again. I witnessed this with a friend. She was abducted at knife point when leaving work one night. There was really no help for her. She actually ended up attending our Parents of Murder Children's meetings because we were the only support in town there was. And it took her a long time, and I think that had there been some more help or somebody to help her, how much better it would have been for her. Because of the, I'm sorry.
Take your time.
This is hard.
It's okay.
The courts will appoint legal counsel for the defendant if needed, and the defendant has many rights per the law, which is correct. However, what about the victim? Who is there to speak for the victim if the victim's advocate is gone? I spoke with Sabrina briefly last week about the different aspects of her position and what it entails. And one of the things she shared with me, and I can't get this image out of my head, and that sounds so trite, but she was telling me of a person that she assisted in getting new bedding because the bedding had been taken away as evidence, and the person had no other bedding. And such a simple thing, but it's so necessary. I do understand there are budget constraints, but I do ask you to consider carefully how important this position is to our community, and what impact of not having a victim's advocate would not only have on the victims and their families, but for the community of Long Polk as well. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Councilmembers, my name is Allison Wales, and I'm here to speak tonight on the victim advocate position. I first like to say that I respect the position that you are in. I've had family that has private business, we've had people working in government, and I myself have worked in nonprofit for 17 years. I know the budgetary dance, and it's not a pretty one. And so, I respect the position that you are in, in having to balance everything. But that being said, I am here to speak on behalf of this position because it is unique, not only to this community, but really to anyone in law enforcement in the state. I was very fortunate to be actually the second victim advocate at the Long Polk Police Department through the Rape Crisis Center many years ago. Since that time, we've had five advocates. Sabrina's just our latest person to fill that job. It's not just about Sabrina, it's not about the five advocates that have been there, but the future ones as well, and the future victims, because there will be victims as well. We have built, and I say "we" as in the center, the city, the department, and the department heads, from Chief Brown to Chief Dabney to Chief Olson now, have built a very solid foundation, and a unique foundation in this community that makes us special, and it helps so many people that have no words. Yes, there are other advocates if we lose this position, there are advocates at the Rape Crisis Center, Domestic Violence Solutions, the victim's advocate at the DA's office. But I will tell you, once this position is lost, it is lost. It will not come back, and there will be victims and families that will fall through the cracks, because there's only so much that the few advocates that are in this community can do. This advocate position, as small as it is, is important. I just want you to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Karen Powers, I'm a citizen of Long Polk, and I'm here on behalf of the victim advocate position and the North County Rape Crisis and Child Protection Center. I had written something, because I hate speaking, but what Allison said, I want to say the same thing. The job that the victim advocate does can't be duplicated by rape crisis advocates or DVS advocates, Domestic Violence Solution advocates, because we have so many other things going on. I'm like, I'm the Finance Human Resource Director and Advocate. Think of being a Finance Human Resource Director and trying to take care of victims. I do the crisis intervention right in the beginning, but as time goes on, I don't have my hands in the pie like I probably should, but like Sabrina can, because that's, her whole role is being an advocate. She gets to focus 100 percent of her time on advocating for survivors of sexual assault and domestic violence, and that is priceless. To be able to call the police department and get immediate answers from an advocate, because law enforcement's out in the field with other cases, they don't have the time either to spend on one person to walk them through what's going to happen with their case, if the perpetrator's out on bail, still incarcerated, going to court, even going to be charged. The victim advocate is so important for the victims, so please, 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 think about even, maybe the hours could be cut a little bit. Maybe it doesn't need to be 40 hours, sorry, Sabrina. But seriously, I mean, even a little bit is better than none at all, because to have someone from the police department calling just to say, "How are you? How you doing? You know, are you doing the follow-up that I suggested? Do you need any support? Is there anything else that I can help you with?" From the police department, that would be priceless. So, please, think on this before you make a decision. Thanks.
Thank you. Who's next?
Good evening, my name is Elvira Bustos Martinez. I am here to show my support and hope that the position of the victim's advocate position does not get taken away. Sabrina Ross has been a great support to me and my family after losing my sister, Selena Lopez-Bustos, who was murdered June 15, 2012. The day we found Selena, Sabrina immediately went to my house to give us the victim program brochure with all the important names and numbers we needed, and with her support. The week of the funeral arrangements, she was very supportive with assisting us in many family matters that we had during that week. I know I am among many people that have had the pleasure of being assisted by Sabrina, but not only does she do her job, but she goes above and beyond. I know this is her job to assist us, but I can't thank her enough for her support and for her hugs. Through this grieving process, we have also gone through some bad experiences from law enforcement agents that don't respect the privacy of the family members who have lost a sister, a daughter, through such a tragic death. Sabrina understands the pain and the grieving we are all going through involving a loved one. Having her stay in her position, not only would it benefit us as to get us through the trial process that has yet to begin, but all the other people that will or are suffering from other crimes. I know that I always can count on her smile and a hug, and Sabrina's sincere hug. I can count on her to answer any questions that we have, taking consideration that she can assist in a way that not even the detectives or police officers can assist, with care, concern, and encouragement. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, and we're sorry for the loss of your sister.
Hi, I'm Shannon Rose Travis, I'm the Executive Director of the North County Rape Crisis and Trial Protection Center, which works in conjunction with the Long Polk Police Department to place the victim advocate. There's not much more I can add to the previous speakers, especially the last speaker, to speak to the need for this. I also know that you have a lot of hard decisions to make in putting the budget together, that's part of what I do at the center, and I know you have to really search and look and see what you can do. I also know that- I also know that Lompoc Police Department is having their own budgetary issues, and I think this position can complement what the public safety officers are doing. I know that it does complement that and makes their job easier. If the public safety officers need to do, have a furlough day, that's something that we can look at also for this position. When she is at the police department, this victim advocate is really a member and representing the police department and the community of Lompoc, providing the services that the people before me have talked about. So I know that you have a lot to think about, and I just hope that you will consider extending this partnership that we've been privileged to have for so many years. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
And Mr. Mayor, my name is Kathy Smerschman. I'm the Chairman of MarkableU.org. On a little lighter note, I hope, than what I've been hearing so far, I'd like to tell you a little bit about what's going on at school. We have four students who have passed their primaria, two that have passed their secundaria. In other words, they now have their high school equivalent. Three of those students are now studying the GED for the Spanish exam. We also have two citizenship students, one who will take her test the nineteenth of this month. Also, we have three students who've been studying Spanish with us. They are on the end of Level 3 going into Level 4, which means they have one more level to go before they're done with all five levels of Rosetta Stone. And they're such a group of characters. We had a soiree not long ago, that's a party, for those of you who don't know what that is. And they all brought snacks, and we had drinks, and they were supposed to spend half their time speaking Spanish and the other half speaking English. They spent the entire night thoroughly confusing me, speaking nothing but Spanish. Our photo students recently went to see the miniature donkeys and the miniature horses and took some really great pictures over there, and those will be on display in our lobby within the next two weeks. And the last thing I'd like to talk to you about is my challenge to you last time I was here. And I have to say that as far as our school is concerned, I appreciate the fact that you did give Pastor Doug and New Life their conditional use permit. Pastor Doug and Victor Bobo are both now students with us, learning HTML. They're going to do their own website for the school, for the rest of your programs too, yes? Yes, I'm getting a yes back there, okay? And they're going to be bringing their students, going to make it a requirement. They come and study with us at school. So pastors feeding them heart and soul and body, and we're going to educate them. And I think this is something that we need to see more of, whether it be with our school, whether it be with adult education. I think these people need to be encouraged to get back into the mainstream through education, as well as feeding and taking care of their bodies. And with that, I think that's all I had to report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Marilyn, I really just wanted to take a moment and say thank you very much for what you do for this community. You've been working very hard, and we recognize that, so I wanted to say thank you.
You're very welcome. Wait until next week. We're getting a ProCam. It's a professional video camera to shoot our own videos in-house. So we'll be doing all of those. And I, we'll get it before I leave for Mexico. I've been invited by the Mexican Government Department of Education to attend a seminar in Mexico City for primary and secondary students, as well as there is going to be a special seminar just for those of us here in California, because we are working with more students than any other state in the nation.
Very good. Who's next?
Good evening. My name is Diana Dominguez, and I am the Coordinator for the county's Sexual Assault Response Team. Our program has run out of the DA's office, and we're responsible for conducting all of the medical legal exams on adults, children, as well as doing forensic interviews on children who have been victims of abuse or witnesses to abuse. And I'm here tonight to speak in support of the victim advocate position at Lompoc Police Department. As you've probably heard, in our county, this is the only police department that has an in-house victim advocate, someone who's there during business hours, who a detective can grab or ask for help for them at any time. And I'd ask you to put yourselves in the position of a parent on one of the worst days of their lives. They get a phone call at work, and their child has disclosed to a school counselor that they've been sexually molested. The parent doesn't know who did it, they don't know the circumstances, they don't know the severity, they don't know how long it's been going on. Terrified, angry, scared for their child, wondering what this means for the rest of their child's life. Is my child going to be able to function? Is this going to have long-lasting effects? They have so many questions that a detective or officer isn't going to be able to answer for them right away, because that person is doing their job to gather evidence, talk to witnesses, interview that child in a safe manner that we do at a facility here in Lompoc that's dedicated only for victims of abuse. Someone like Sabrina comes in, sits down with that parent, and looks them in the eyes and says, "It's going to be okay." Explains what's going to happen, explains that the child's going to be interviewed in a forensically sound manner, explains to them what that means, that their child's not going to be asked any leading questions, that their child is going to have a safe place to talk about what's happened to them. And not to be blamed, not to be shamed, to be told that whatever happened to you is not your fault, that it doesn't matter if the perpetrator told you not to tell, doesn't matter if they told you that they were going to hurt your family, but that this isn't your fault. That victim advocate, while their child, that child is being interviewed, also starts to talk with parents about their feelings of guilt, their feelings of fear, starts talking about additional community resources that are available, such as the services at North County Rape Crisis Center, services through the District Attorney's Victim Witness Assistance Program, and is mostly just present for that person while they're wondering, "What's this, what's my child telling this stranger that I've never met in the other room? What happened to my child?" I cannot stress the importance of this position, otherwise that parent's sitting in the waiting room by themselves, and nobody's there to explain. You know, the detective does the best that they can, but they're on a, you know, on a time clock. They've got to get in there, they've got to interview this child, so that they can hopefully go right back out and talk to a suspect and say, "This child told me that you did X, Y, and Z." And they're able to confront them right away. So I ask you to think about parents in the waiting room. I ask you to think about younger and older siblings sitting in that waiting room, and how important it is that there's someone there who can sit with them while they cry, who can answer their questions, who can assure them that because they believe their child and are there with them right now, that they will be okay, that they are extremely resilient, and that they will be there from the beginning of that process, from that first interview, all the way through the disposition of that case. And I ask you to put yourself in that waiting room and ask yourself, "Would you want to be sitting in there alone?" Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Last chance? There we go.
My name is Kay Tinsley, and I'm here in support of the victim advocate position. I just really can't say enough about how Sabrina has helped my family as my daughter went through domestic violence. And a small child was involved in not being hurt, but still in the situation. As a grandmother and as a mother, just to have someone to talk to and to help guide us through what we needed to do in the situation was very good. And I know everybody says that Lompoc is a city that's on the grow, and I think that's very good. And I think that we just need someone like Sabrina and the victim's advocate and everyone that helps to be able to help people like us. And I know we were just blessed that somebody was there that could guide us through all of that. And I just thank you for listening, and just please consider that this is very important for Lompoc, I think, and for people that really need this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. My name is Ann McCarty. I'm the Associate Director for North County Rape Crisis and Child Protection Center. I've had the honor of knowing what the position of the victim advocate brings to the Lompoc Police Department and the city of Lompoc since its inception. As one of the old timers doing this work, and there are a few of us in here tonight, we know the added benefit that this layer of care brings to our community. We also know what it means not to have it. And with the number of calls and the number of incidents that are occurring in our city, because, believe it or not, we do not live in Mayberry anymore, we need this position. And I'm not saying that out of a selfish, or coming from a selfish place. I'm saying it because of the children that we see on a daily basis that are growing up in this town, and we keep encouraging them to speak out and to speak up. And the position of victim advocate at Lompoc Police Department and working in concert with the detectives in the Bureau and the officers on the street bring that sense of comfort to those children who are one day going to be adults. And we want those adults to live safely in this community. So I encourage you to continue funding this position, because we desperately need it in our community. We need it for our citizens. We need it for the nonprofits that work with the Lompoc Police Department, not just the Rape Crisis Center, Domestic Violence Solutions, Catholic Charities, the Bridge House, the Marx House. All of us work together to create a safety net for our citizens, and we can't do it alone, and we need the help at the police department. Thank you.
Thank you.
For those of you that don't already know me, my name is Sabrina, and I am the victim advocate at the Lompoc Police Department. I actually wasn't even sure if I should get up and speak. It felt a little bit self-serving, please save my job, but I'm one of those people that lands on their feet, so whatever decision you make, I know I'll be okay. So what I wanted to tell you is that I actually get asked the question a lot, exactly what it is I do. I usually rattle off a list of things that pop into my head. I accompany victims to various exams, interviews, court proceedings, meetings, even doctor's appointments. I give referrals to social services, counseling, and other outside agencies that have been mentioned. I go out in the community, I talk about healthy relationships and domestic violence with adults and teens. I've worked on over 400 cases in the year I've held this position. Those cases vary from domestic violence and sexual assaults to battery and homicide. But all that being said, I still sometimes find it hard to articulate exactly what I do, because each client has their own unique needs, and I cater my services to those needs. So I thought instead of just telling you about what I do, I wanted to show you something. This is a packet for a domestic violence restraining order. Probably about 50% of the work I do consists of assisting people with domestic violence restraining orders. This packet, as you can see, is fairly thick. This is for somebody that does not have children. A packet for someone with children is about twice as thick as this. You can go ahead and look through that if you like. It takes anywhere from an hour and a half to two hours to fill this packet out, and that's with my assistance. So imagine being a victim that's just been through something very traumatizing, that is confused and torn and doesn't know what to do next. And they go to the court clerk, and they're handed this packet of paper and said, "Okay, here you go. Fill that out and bring it back." Most victims of domestic violence use all their courage and strength to reach out for help, let alone having the strength left to tackle the intensive paperwork that's involved in filing for a restraining order. But my clients never have to reach out for help past calling the police, because I go to them. I call them, I go to their homes, I call their family members, I do whatever it is I have to locate them and contact them and see how they're doing and if they need help. They never have to pick this packet up, because I have it on my computer at work. I call them, I set up an appointment and have them come in at their earliest convenience. This page, which is in there, but it's a lot of paperwork to look through, as you see, is where they describe the abuse in their relationship. It covers the entire history of abuse. So imagine being a victim and having to write and articulate to a judge who doesn't know you and doesn't know your history, what it's like to be abused, and convince them that you need a restraining order against this person. Usually, I sit in my office, and I have to pull the details out of them. One of the unique things about being at the police department is I can actually look up their case. I don't have to ask them a ton of questions. I can go to their case, I can look at their police report, and I read it to them, and I say, "Is this what happened? Yes, that's what happened." And I just transfer it over and I copy it, so they don't have to relive what they've already lived through. So I tell them not only how to get their paperwork served, but I explain why it's important. Sometimes I'll even go and I'll help them find people, because oftentimes, people who are batterers, they know someone's coming for them, and they like to hide. They're very difficult to find at times. I will even help them find them. I will call other law enforcement agencies, I will work with immigration, whoever I need to do probation, to make sure that person gets served and appears at the hearing. After filling out all this paperwork, they have to appear before a judge at a hearing, where often their abuser is present. I not only accompany them to the hearing, but I will literally place myself between them and the other party, so they feel safe. And it's this kind of unique personal attention and dedication I give to each and every client who needs it. And we have other amazing agencies in town, but as it was mentioned, a lot of them are overwhelmed, and they cannot deliver this kind of personal attention that I do. So I only have one second left. So I just wanted, there's a lot of people here, and I don't want them to have to stay for the entire city council meeting. So I would like just everyone who's here to support the victim advocate position, if you could please just stand up and show the city council members you're here. Thank you. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Sabrina.
Did you want to keep that restraining order packet?
Yeah, we'll keep that for the clerk, if you don't mind. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one rise, we'll close our communication, if I can learn to say it, and we'll come back to the council. And now we have the consent calendar, which is very extensive, so I'm going to read it. Number one is approval of the minutes of the meeting of April 16th. Number two is approval of expenditures, a payroll voucher for $1,259,000, expense voucher for $280,000, expense voucher for $278,000. I will abstain from the vote on check number 312983 to Smithy's towing for $102.90. Item number three, amend the application for Proposition 1B funds. This is a second reading. Number four, closing portions of Ocean Avenue and H Street for the Lompoc High School Alumni Cruise Night on June 14, 2013. Item number five, closing portions of Ocean Avenue and H Street for the Flower Festival Parade on June 29th and the Lompoc Criterion on June 30th. Item number six, closing portions of Ocean Avenue and H Street for the Lompoc Police Department LPD Cruise Run to benefit the Special Olympics, and the Torch Run came through Lompoc this afternoon. I was happy to present a proclamation... I was happy to present a proclamation and the chief gave them a really large check. I hope they can get it in the ATM. And then item number seven, Resolution Number 584413, designating, designating certain streets in the vicinity of Ryan Park for permit parking only during the 2013 Flower Festival. Item number eight, unclaimed property stale dated checks and transferring the stale dated checks to the general fund. Number nine, waive further reading and adopt ordinance number 159013, approving the text amendment TA 12-05, amending the City of Lompoc zoning ordinance, Chapter 17 dot 112, the parking regulations. And this is a second reading. Number 10, the second reading of a pre-zoning for ZC 12-01, the summary of action to amend the city zoning map for the Summit View Homes Development. Just a really long list. Number 11, the conditional use permit CUP 12-10, the summary of action upholding the appeal and approval operation of the New Life Christian Center Homeless Shelter Planning Division File Number CUP 12-10. And finally, number 12, issuance of a purchase order in the amount of $186,566.81 for 500 MCM cable to be installed along the south side of Central Avenue in, from O to V Streets, 7,964 feet, and 6,000 feet for spare because we've used up everything that we had in spare doing another portion of the Central Avenue. And underground cable is different from aerial cable and it wears out about every 20 years. So we're pulling it out and replacing it and recycling the copper. Is there any item on the list that a council member would like to pull? Councilmember Lingle?
Mr. Mayor, it's not that I want to pull it, but I don't believe we received the minutes from the April 16th meeting for review.
Really?
Yeah, so I think we're going to have to... Did someone, did anyone get them?
Yeah, I didn't get them. Well, I shouldn't say that. They may have ended in my box and I, I didn't, I didn't go look. Okay, so we'll pull off item number one and we won't act on that. So item number one will just be dropped. Tabled. No, it'll be dropped because it'll come back next time. Anyway, whatever. We won't, we won't do any of that. Anything else anybody wants to take?
I don't want to pull it, but on item number nine, I just want to remind staff that when we approved this amendment, uh, it was under the understanding that the amendment would be brought to the Planning Commission for discussion of possibly incorporating the, um, ordinance from the City of San Luis Obispo. I just want to remind staff that that was our understanding when we passed this. And even though it doesn't state it in there, and I understand that.
Yes, that was clear at the meeting, but that was a future action.
Correct, yes, and I understand that.
Okay. So we're going to get this done and we're going to act, we're going to come back and take a look at the Planning Commission. We'll look at that and report back to the City Council. Yeah, okay. So having those items cleared up, is there any other question? If not, I'd accept a motion in a second.
I'll move that we accept the consent calendar items two through 12.
Okay, and a second.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion on any of these items? Seeing none, could we vote, please? That passes 5-0. Okay, let's do 13, then we'll take our break, since this is nothing. So now we'll have item 13, adoption of the fiscal year 2013-14 GAN appropriations limitation. Brad, tell us how much we could have spent and how much we're actually spending.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. I will get to that in a second. The, um, one of the actions that's required by Proposition 4 and Proposition 111 is that this is a public hearing. Um, if this was not a public hearing, this would likely be something that would be on your consent agenda. But as part of the law, it's required to have a public hearing. So other than that, this is a ministerial action that's taken every year to determine how much appropriations the city could theoretically put into the budget for the purposes of, um, the general fund. Our appropriation limit is $34 million. The appropriations that are subject to that limit is only $14 million. So there's a $20 million capacity of spending money, except we'd have to have the money to be able to spend the money. So the 14 million is what is in the budget to be appropriated, the subject to the GAN limit. Uh, the GAN limit process provides for an upper limit. We'll never get there with the funding streams that we currently have because either the state takes the money away from us or the majority of it is that the cost of living items that are in here, the increasing California per capita, um, income, which is here, is 5.12% this year, or the growth in city or county population, which is 0.45% this year. Um, the cumulative effect of that since 1978 just has outstripped our abilities to, um, have those funds available. So getting back to the, the fiscal impact of this, um, to prepare this report requires some work, um, to get the information from, from the state. The state has to prepare some information that has to be done. They have a whole division at the State Department of Finance to figure out the population increases and the, the, um, per capita income increases. So I'm sure there's a, a lot of work that they do that is only for this because I'm, I don't think there's a lot of other reasons why they do it. Ultimately, what the request is for you to, um, adopt Resolution 585013, um, so that we're in compliance with both Proposition 111 from 1990 and Proposition 4 from 1979 regarding the appropriation limits for this current fiscal year coming up 1314 in the amount of And it does require a public hearing.
And here we are, having our public hearing. Okay, thank you very much. So now we'll open this to oral communication. Would anybody like to talk to us about finding the other 20 million back from the state? Because if you could, an awful lot of our other problems would go away. Seeing no one rise, we'll close oral communications and we'll come back to the council. Are there any questions for Mr. Wilkie at this moment, other than where the 20 million is? Councilmember Costa?
No questions, Mary Lynn. As this is a ministerial, as you mentioned, um, I move that council adopt the attached resolution 5850, paren's 13, setting the fiscal year 1314 appropriations limit.
I'll second that. And is there any discussion? Pretty much not an issue. Could we vote, please? That passes 5-0. Great job, Brad. Hope you can find the 20 million and we'll take a seven-minute break. And now coming back to order quickly. Our next item, a public hearing on item number 14. Public hearing to consider the ordering of services and improvements, uh, services and improvements, the continuation of the assessment for fiscal year 1314, the City of Lompoc Park Pool Maintenance Assessment District at All. And here you are again.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. This is another public hearing. It's the third time that we've presented this item to you in the last five months. In February, uh, we brought to you a request to, for a, for the preparation of the engineer's report. On May 7th, we brought back a draft engineer's report for review and to ask for the setting of a public hearing. This meeting is the public hearing to accept the report and to give direction to file with the county the necessary paperwork to provide for the assessment in the 1314 cycle of all the properties that are a part of the district. The, there have been some questions on the budget, which is on page nine of the engineer's report. And I just want to, one thing I'd like to point out is that a budget, uh, provides for the expenditure of funds, but it does not require the expenditure of funds. This budget is a little bit unique in the two-year cycle because we were preparing the citywide budget on the same timeline that we're preparing this budget. So there are some things that are in this budget that are requests from departments that may not have ended up in the citywide 1315 budget. But this budget is actually more of a guiding principles of what the things are that we want to, uh, do with the, with the district. Stepping back a little bit, the assessment is approximately $294,000 this year based on the cost of living increases. Um, that has a special and a general benefit. The general benefit that has been determined by the engineer is 25%. So the, the minimum amount that would have to be identified as eligible park-related expenditures is approximately $394,000. If you look at the budget, the, the very first item on the budget is the Aquatic Center Debt Service, which is the payments for the bonds that were issued in 2004 and 2010 related to the Aquatic Center. That item in and of itself, which is paid for by debt, um, tax increment, formally paid for by the RDA, qualifies entirely for the general and special portion of assessments. So if we really had to or really desired to, uh, this budget could be just a one-line item, which is the, uh, payment of the debt service for the Aquatic Center. However, we'd like to show in the engineer's report all the things that are desired that we know about currently. So we did provide some additional information for some of the things that are either budgeted in impact fees, um, proposed or being done currently through CDBG funds, um, or in a couple instances through our enterprise funds. The second item that's on here is the Aquatic Center Operations, which is the operations of the Aquatic Center itself, which is in an enterprise fund. It does receive general fund monies and the budget proposal is for $210,000, which is exactly the same that has been provided in the last two years. The Dewey Center is also shown as part of it. That's another enterprise fund. That's supported by fees, um, taken in at the center. The Ryan Park Restrooms is one of the items that's been carried over for two or three cycles. It actually was proposed to be done with RDA funds. So with the dissolution of the RDA, that funding source disappeared. Um, it's outside the census tract areas for CDBG, so CDBG funds can't be used for it. It's still a desired improvement in our parks, which is why it's on the list, but the city is still looking for a funding source that would be appropriate other than the general fund because the general fund is the, the fund of last resort for these type of activities. And in fact, the only item that's on here that is proposed to come from general fund sources is the Ryan Park Arts Design Fix. And that was a council request that has, that is in the budget. But beyond that, the rest of the items that are on here, the Ryan Park Parking Lot Renovations was a request by the division that has currently been deferred in the 1315 budget cycle. The Civic Auditorium renovations has already been approved to use CDBG funds and that is an ongoing project. I think it's actually got a PO issued for it. The River Park Parking Improvements was also something requested by the Parks Division. Then that also was something that was, is desired, but in the 1315 budget that will be presented later, it's not recommended to be funded. But it is something that would benefit the parks in the long range and we will look for funding opportunities to be able to do that in the future. The BMX facility construction, um, that's a little bit unique because that will be something that will be donated to the city once it's constructed by the, um, Park Foundation through the use of the volunteer group that is wanting to put that together. This is not necessarily the amount that they're going to spend on it. It's also not the amount that the city's going to spend on it. It's the recognition that the value of what will be donated to the city, um, what that number will end up being will be the estimate that's provided to us by the design team that's working on it, as if it was being built with money rather than by volunteers. And that shows the recognition that we're adding to the inventory of park infrastructure within the community because of that effort. The 12,000 for the College Park Parking is budgeted in the Pool Enterprise Fund at $5,000, so it's a little bit different. The Aquatic Center Equipment Replacement, that was budgeted in conjunction with the, the demonification project through RDA for the items that couldn't be funded by RDA funds, so it was budgeted out of impact fees, not general fund. The, the Beatty Park Parking Lot Renovations is approximately, I think, 15,000 or 16,000 dollars a year budgeted in parks for parking lot renovations. Last year, we used some of that money to do some improvements at Beatty Park with a, piggybacked on a existing contract that we had for streets to do slurrishell projects. Uh, the expectation is when we have another slurrishell project that is very economical, we'll see if we can expand that to some of the parking lots that can't be funded by Mezuray. And that's why that's in here. The, the barbecue pits and gazebo roof were budgeted in the 1113 cycle with impact fees. That's still something that's on the table for them to do, but again, it's impact fees and not general fund. The Barton Park Improvements is actually left, it's probably carried over from the 0911 cycle. There's nothing specific identified for that, but it was monies that were identified probably during the time that Barkin Park was built to do some additional amenities. And once the division determines what can and should be done, that money's available for that project. And then the final thing is the Park Lighting Safety Enhancements. That's actually funded directly out of the assessment monies. That's the very first thing that's funded before the money is, uh, segregated off to provide for other park activities. The biggest chunk of the money that comes in from the assessment pays for the district's portion of the 2004 bond that is dedicated by, that is supported and guaranteed by the district. And the 2004 bond covenants and bond contract requires that this funding source be maintained during the course of the 2004 bond to pay for that portion of the debt, which is about $2.3 million. And then on top of that, there's some assessment fees charged by the county and the production of the engineer's report itself is funded from assessments. That just kind of gives a little bit of a background on the specific items that are in here. But backing up, the only amount that we were required to spend is the approximate $400,000. And that's, um, that satisfies the special and general purposes identified in the engineer's report. In October, maybe November, the Oversight Committee will take a look at what we actually did in the 1213 cycle to compare that with last year's budget to see what we spent our money on, what still has to be spent on. And that's a avenue for the Oversight Committee to look at what we actually did compared to what we planned on doing and to verify and validate that we spent the adequate amount to meet our obligations under, under the assessment. Having said all that, the assessment itself is based on CPI. The CPI is limited to 3%. In this year, the amount is only 1.96%. There is no carryover from a previous year. And the assessment recommended by the engineer's report is $25.28 per year, which is a 48 cents increase from the prior year assessment per parcel. With that, um, the request is to adopt Resolution 584813 to allow for the next steps to be able to put the assessments on the tax rolls. All the activities that are conducted under the assessment, the engineer's report, putting the, the cost of having the county put it on the rolls is paid for out of the assessment. This assessment allows for some activities that are, would otherwise be general fund in nature to be taken on by the assessment district rather than by general funds. That concludes the report section. There still has to be a public hearing. Mary Schultz from SEI Consulting is here tonight, in case there's any other... Mary Schultz from SEI Consulting is here tonight, in case there's any other, any additional questions. She and I are both here to answer questions before and after the public hearing.
Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Mary Lynn. Mr. Wilkie, can you briefly go over again College Park Parking Improvements? You mentioned something, but I'm sorry, I didn't follow what you were saying. That's that twelve thousand dollars listed on page nine.
The, in two thousand and four, when the Aquatic Center was built, the parking area was paved and was lined. It was marked for parking stalls. Since then, the lines for where you park have virtually worn away. So, the request by the Division is to slurrish seal and re-striping of the parking lot. In addition to that, College Park, which encompasses the YMCA and the Skateboard Park, the property belongs to us. The YMCA rents the building from us. We own the land underneath. That agreement we have with the YMCA requires us to maintain the parking lot, the outside areas. So, this would provide for striping and sealing of the parking lots for both the Aquatic Center and the YMCA.
Thank you.
Councilmember Homebell.
Yeah, Brad, do we still have a working relationship with the school district? At one time, when we first got it, we were using some of their parking for the facility. And so, how's that right now still going?
My understanding is that the parking requirements for that facility required more parking than was available. So, we do have an agreement with the school district to have overflow parking there. What the school district got out of that was the use of the pool for less than what it would cost us to run it. And they utilize it for swim meets, water polo. But it also allows us, when we have things like the triathlon, to utilize their parking for the people who come into town to utilize the facility.
Yeah, I thought that was part of the original contract on it.
Yeah.
Okay, seeing no other lights on, we'll open this to public comment. Is there anyone who would like to speak to us on this subject? Nobody. Last chance. Going once, going twice, gone, back to council. Any questions for Mr. Wilkie? No questions. Who would like to make a motion?
I would like to point one thing out. I mentioned earlier that the Oversight Committee will be meeting in October, and I was just talking the can here, that because of the rules for committees, that we lost three members on the park, on the pool Oversight Board this year, and we only have one member. So, when October rolls around, we need to find some additional people to fill those spots. Back in February, I actually brought to you a request to expand the capabilities of the Oversight Board, because it's very focused and very different than all the other committees, to allow for multiple memberships in this committee and other committees. So, somebody from the Economic Development Committee can now sit on the Economic Development Committee and the Oversight Board. So, if there's people interested in doing that, I encourage them to apply with the city clerk.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Mr. Wilkie, real quick, this list we just went through on here, this note on the back says, "This project list includes projects continued from the FY-oh-six-seven budget." And I'd forwarded an email earlier that, I'm just curious, are these projects that are on here, which ones are the old projects? Are they done stale? Are we saving for them, or just?
Well, the only one that's really that old is the Ryan Park, no, the Restrooms, because it's gone through several iterations of, is it going to cost that much? Do we really, how are we going to do it? And also the funding sources. We were hoping to use CDBG funds with it. We resourced that and realized we couldn't. Then we were, then we thought about using RDA funds. Well, last year, RDA funds got taken away by the state. So, it's still something we need, there's still a need for the park to have ADA-accessible bathrooms. That's the main reason why it's on here. The reason it's why it's on here that long is we're looking for a funding source that's not general fund. So, we're looking for a way to pay for it and get the ADA accessibility done in a cost-effective and beneficial way to, so we can spread our money further along. Besides that one, almost everything else is within the last two budget cycles.
Okay, a motion? Councilmember Homebell.
If I'm reading it right, it'd be the adopted Resolution number five-eight-four-eight-thirteen, approving the Engineering Report and confirming the diagram assessment for year two thousand thirteen, two thousand and fourteen for the Park Maintenance City Pool Assessment District number two-oh-two-dash-oh-one.
And a second.
I'll second.
And is there any discussion on this one? Seeing none, could we vote, please? That passes five-zero.
Thank you, and I'd like to say thanks to Mary for coming down, in case there was any more technical questions I wouldn't be able to help with, so, thank you.
And everybody out there, your taxes just went up forty-eight cents. Okay, now moving to item number fifteen, new business, review and adoption of the draft proposed City of Lompoc fiscal year two thousand and thirteen-fifteen by annual budget. City Administrator?
Honorable Mayor, City Council Members, and Community Audience, it gives me great pleasure to present to you tonight the draft bound fiscal year thirteen-fifteen proposed by annual budget. And council, each of you have been provided a bound copy. This is the cover, and it is a photo of the Rotary Clock located in Old Town, H Street, and Ocean Avenue, as we all know and love. And this clock was generously donated to the city on behalf of the Lompoc Rotary Club and was dedicated in December of two thousand and eleven. The fiscal year thirteen-fifteen proposed budget is compiled for your review and consideration for adoption, and presents the collaborative work of City Council, Administration, Finance, all department heads, and their budgeting staff. The draft proposed budget represents staff's best efforts at conservatively planning for anticipated expenditures that are necessary to maintain existing services, as well as provide opportunities for implementing the priorities of City Council over the next two years. The proposed budget is a financial document that serves as a guideline for expenditures to meet city obligations to fund services. I already spoke about the cover. The table of contents is included in front of the bound budget, followed by the City Administrator's transmittal message on pages A-one through fourteen, presenting a comprehensive overview of the budget and its major expenditures. And at this time, I would take the opportunity to give credit where it's due, and thank Assistant City Administrator Teresa Gallivan and Management Services Director Brad Wilkie for their diligent work on this transmittal letter. The bound budget includes the city organizational chart on pages B-one, followed by the detail of revenues by city funds on pages C-one through twenty-one. On pages D-one, two, and three are three budget graphs reflecting the city's general fund revenues by each revenue source and source percentages to the total general fund revenues. The second graph depicts the city's general fund expenditures, showing the percentage of each general fund department to total general fund operating budget. And the third graph shows the general fund operations by functional type to total general fund operating budget, showing sixty-three percent of all general fund appropriations as salaries and benefits. I would acknowledge Brad Wilkie and his Finance Division Budgeting Team for their work on the detailed revenues and budget graphs that provide a more visibly, visually appealing layout, providing improved readability and transparency. The remainder of the bound budget includes departmental budgets, each presenting a department mission statement, goals, and objectives, and a budget commentary that explains the department's budget appropriations and their planned activities to be performed throughout the two-year budget cycle. So, the fiscal thirteen-fifteen citywide biannual budget is one-hundred-and-eighty-eight million, which is an increase of eight-point-three percent over the fiscal eleven-thirteen adopted budget. The draft bound budget before you is the culmination of an eight-month budget process. The thirteen-fifteen two-year budget reflects staff's best efforts at translating City Council's priorities into a financial document, which provides the City Council information for making policy decisions regarding services and programs during the two-year budget cycle. While the economic climate has begun to recover, significant challenges continue as a result of increased federal and state mandated costs, including CalPERS retirement, healthcare, insurance, and workers' compensation, all driving up employee salaries. The proposed budget includes council's earlier work and budget balancing actions adopted and implemented during the fiscal years oh-nine-eleven and eleven-thirteen budgets. The thirteen-fifteen proposed budget retains all of council's earlier actions to ensure a fiscally responsible approach for balancing the two-year budget. Therefore, the draft proposed thirteen-fifteen biannual budget before you reflects a status quo I'm pleased to report the two-year general fund operating budget of fifty-seven million is balanced without use of general fund reserves. Therefore, the general fund reserves of six-point-six million retain, remain whole and represents twenty-four percent of fiscal thirteen-fourteen budget year, and includes reserves of two million in the Economic Uncertainty Fund. The general fund budget reflects a thirteen percent increase over the eleven-thirteen budget, and this is primarily due to the federal and state mandated costs as previously So, the budget provides funding for essential services, which are services protecting health, safety, and desired quality of life necessary for effective city government. And it includes approximately two million grant funds for nine public safety grant positions during this budget cycle. The budget implements council's priorities, does not use general fund reserves, and thus required very conservative budgeting decisions. Utility rate increases are anticipated during this budget cycle for water, wastewater, and solid waste, due primarily to debt covenants, requiring the utilities to collect adequate revenues to pay for operating and debt repayments. Revenues are not expected to comply with debt covenants during thirteen-fifteen budget cycle without increasing service charges to do so. The budget includes departmental compensation increases due to CalPERS retirement, healthcare, and workers' compensation costs, as well certain general fund department staffing allocations increase due to dissolution of the Lompoc Redevelopment Agency, increasing the total staffing allocations for City Council, City Administration, and economic and community development departments. The thirteen-fifteen proposed budget provides adequate funds to ensure the city's compliance with federal and state mandates, and assumes continued state funding for post-police training reimbursement, assumes continuation of state cops funding of one-hundred thousand each year that covers the cost of one police officer and one dispatch jailer. And while negotiations with our labor groups are underway, the budget assumes contracts with our labor groups. The draft proposed City of Lompoc thirteen-fifteen biannual budget is respectfully submitted as a balanced budget without use of general fund reserves and is recommended for your approval. Staff recommends council review the proposed budget, and if council desires to adopt the biannual budget tonight, staff recommends council adopt Resolution number fifty-eight-fifty-three-thirteen, or provide other direction as council deems necessary. Upon adoption, the thirteen-fifteen biannual budget will be comprised of all anticipated revenues available to the city over the course of the biannual budget period, and all anticipated expenditures necessary to maintain existing services and carry out most of the priorities of City Council for the same period. Honorable Mayor and City Council Members, I would take this opportunity to thank all of you for your assistance and support of staff over this eight-month budget process. And I would also thank city department heads and staff for their assistance and support. I especially thank Management Services Director Brad Wilkie for his finance, and his finance budgeting team, Economic Development Director Assistant City Administrator Teresa Gallivan, Human Resources Manager Beth Lam Overby, and the Human Resources Division staff, Administration Administrative aide Laura Miranda, Information Systems Manager Jeff Collins, and Johnny Gonzalez, Printing and Web Technician, for their dedication, patience, and hard work in coordinating the preparation of this budget. And so, again, I thank council for your commitment to staff and to this budget process. And this concludes my presentation, but I am going to invite Mr. Wilkie to the podium, who will give a more in-depth briefing on the budget and the numbers. Thank you.
I'd like to share with the council that I think everybody that she just mentioned was here last weekend, all weekend, and it wasn't for the pizza party. It was the long, hard-work party. So, appreciate everybody's push at the end to make it happen. Oh, man, Brad, they didn't invite you to the pizza party? What's up with that?
Mayor, council members, thank you for the opportunity to speak. This is actually a fairly brief overview. I'm going to show you some of the major changes between last year's budget and this year's budget in the general fund, and some of the major milestones for the, our four major I just said this, the general fund and some of the major enterprise funds. One thing I do want to mention is that, for the audience, the budget that you have in front of you, the hard-bound copy, the copy that is attached to the agenda on our website is identical to this. And once this is adopted, there are some minor formatting changes that we plan to do for the final. Once that's done, the, once you adopt it, the new one will be on the website, on our homepage, on the city's finance page, and probably a couple other links in there, too, just so people, it'll be easy for people to find. This is a larger version of one of the D exhibits. It shows the functional type of activities within the general fund for the general fund departments, for salary benefits, services, supplies, and capital outlay. As you can see, the capital outlay is approximately, is a little bit less than one percent of the whole entire budget for the fiscal cycle. This amount is actually made up of two funding sources. One is ongoing operations, and there's also approximately two-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars of some of the one-time monies that we received last month to fund some critical security needs within the city areas that would not have otherwise been funded with, from budget requests. Obviously, salaries, benefits, insurance is forty-one, almost forty-two million dollars out of the fifty-seven. That makes up seventy-four, almost seventy-five percent of the whole entire general fund budget. That isn't abnormal for cities. Cities are service-related industries, and almost all of what we do is through people. Cities are service-related industries, and almost all of what we do is through people. The services and supplies that are part of this reflect the things that are needed to do the operations of the general fund, and those are all better identified within each of the categories of the departments which are in the second major portion of the budget, dealing with all the general fund departments. This is actually a part of the schedule that was previously. I put it up here to give a little bit more clarity to what the general fund does with some of the funds that come in and go out of it. The general fund does support three or four functions. The Dewey Center, that one hundred and thirty thousand dollar is over two years. That funds the senior coordinator at the Dewey Center, who coordinates all of the non-fee type activities that seniors rely on. The traffic offender fund, the receipt of money from the county for court fines and fees that are related to the traffic offender flow through the traffic offender, but are not enough to sustain the operations of the motor vehicle, the motor officer that's assigned to that fund. This amount backfills that position, which is a part which is a position that is part of the the police department, but it's just segregated because of the funding source. The aquatic center operation transfer remains at four hundred and twenty thousand dollars, which is exactly the same that that it was in the budget cycle previously. The one thing that's new up here is the financing proceeds that will be coming into the general fund to pay for the brush truck that the chief mentioned earlier. This will be paid to the fleet department, who will actually own and purchase the vehicle, and it will become part of the citywide replacement fleet. Regarding transfers that come into the general fund, the vast majority of those are related to streets, urban forestry engineering. They're typically called the measure A funds, but there's several funding sources besides measure A, gas tax, transportation funds, TDA funds. All of those are utilized and support the general fund obligation of about three hundred and ninety thousand dollars a year. This provides for the rest of the funding above that minimum level that's required by our state maintenance of effort requirements. The transiting occupancy taxes, we actually collect our taxes in a separate fund for accounting purposes, and we just flush them into the general fund on a monthly basis. So it's shown up as a transfer, but in all intents and purposes, it's one of our tax funding resources for the general fund, along with property taxes and sales taxes. State cops, City Administrator Barcelona mentioned the cops funds coming in. They have to be segregated by law into a separate fund for accounting purposes, and then they can come across into the general fund. And then the remainder are utility one-time and other types of transfers, accounting amounting to about thirteen point seven million dollars. The the big thing that I noticed in this cycle is that we had a significant amount of resources available, and I wanted to point out where those funds went and why some of them are available for some activities and maybe not others. The use of funds is approximately six point six million dollars more in the general fund in the 1315 cycle than it was in 1113 cycle. The vast majority of that is in these major categories. Grant activities for public safety was almost two million dollars. State mandates and takeaways such as the RDA dissolution, stormwater management, citywide stormwater permits, those types of activities accounted for about two million dollars as well. In addition to that was the increase in our purge costs for employees, so there's some employee-related taxes and insurance that's part of this one point nine million. Streets and urban forestry is up about a million dollars. That's two or three funding cycles ago, we purposely left a few positions vacant because of the uncertainty between measure D and measure A. There was the expectation that measure A would not provide enough funding to sustain all the activities that are in the general fund, and we just didn't know how much we would be getting on a consistent stream for measure A. In this budget cycle, those positions have been refunded, so it's not necessarily a large increase in the department budget. It's just reflecting the fact that we've previously had positions that were unfunded because of the uncertainty with measure D. Development activities, the vast majority of this is an expectation that our contract with Broadspec is going to be higher than it was in the 1113 cycle, and that's almost entirely because of increase in development activity. Building permits are up, so the commensurate cost of doing inspections has also gone up. And with a contract, we're able to allow an increase or decrease in our inspection team just by a call to the company, so we don't have to overstaff or understaff within that activity just because of the cycles of development. Also within that number is the refunding of the assistant planner, which was defunded in 1113, and is also planned on being refunded this time because of increased development activity. Council priorities, I have to look at my. The biggest item that's in the council priorities is the brush truck, but that's going to have a funding source for it. There's also economic development activity in here. Then the the other section is, there are several line items that we had cost reductions in the general fund, some that have a little bit more funds. This is just all the rest of those items that net out to about seventy thousand dollars. The bottom section actually shows where we are getting some monies in to pay for these. The state takeaways, state mandates, we're actually getting about eighty thousand dollars from former tax increment in the general fund for regular taxes, so that will help offset some of our costs. Unfortunately, the RDA absorption of staffing in the general fund is about two hundred and forty thousand dollars, only getting about eighty thousand a year from that former tax increment, so we're a net loss on RDA. The grant activities, we're getting about one point eight million dollars to fund the positions that are within the the safer grant, the cops hiring grant, and the cops one oh nine probation grant. The development activity virtually pays for, and in some cases more than what our costs are. That's primarily made up of the estimate for our building permits, inspection permits. So we're we're not making money on building inspection, but it's it's closing the gap on our costs for having a counterperson and the administration of the contract. For the council priorities, approximately three-quarters of a million dollars of monies that are coming in are coming in to pay for those priorities. Again, a big portion of that is the proceeds that we will be getting to pay for the brush truck that will then be paid for out of the ongoing use of the brush truck, as well as annual appropriations charged to the fire department. And then there is really no additional funding source for the others. And so of the six point six four nine million of additional appropriations, approximately four and a half million of that is funded from other sources that were not available two years ago. I'm sorry that this is so small. I tried to make it as big as I could. This is page D five in the budget, and it really shows the summary of all the activities within the bound budget. I have taken a few of the smaller accounts off of this list, so the one that's in the book is the full, complete picture, but this has most of the larger items. It shows about two hundred and eleven million dollars in total, of which about the one hundred eighty-eight thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight million that council member that city administrator Barcelona mentioned earlier. And up here, you see the fifty-seven million, four sixteen in the general fund. I do want to point out one thing. After the publishing of the budget, we've I talked with Ashley Chavez from the library, and the cost of one of the items that's going to be paid for out of intact fees for their automated checkout system, we got a revised number from the company that's providing that, which was a little bit higher than what was in the budget. So we took the opportunity to increase that up, so the appropriation is adequate for the purchase of that equipment. It's about twenty-five thousand dollars more, so there is a little bit difference between what's on this and what's in the bound budget you have. That will be reflected in the final budget once it comes out. This is a very high-level review of the enterprise funds. And one of the things I noticed on the screen before is that two of the funds, water and wastewater, actually have amounts that are being returned back to reserves in the budget cycle. And if you looked at that sheet just without any kind of other support, you would say, why do we need a rate increase if we're actually making money? But the the part that's not on there is that the fact that the operating cash for both of those utilities is negative right now. So the income that will be generated in the 1315 cycle will first be used to allow the utilities to eliminate that negative cash balance, which is effectively a loan from the other funding sources, the other pooled money within the city. So we have to get out of that negative cash balance first. We also have to increase the cash reserve, so we have approximately ninety days of cash on hand. Right now, with the way the budget is proposed, by the end of the 1315 cycle, the water division will only have about six days of cash on hand. It should have ninety days, so it has a ways to go before it becomes healthy again. Wastewater is a little bit worse off. It will still have a negative cash balance by the end of the two-year cycle, and it will need to have at least one more cycle before it gets a positive cash balance, and then can start generating some money that will eventually be used for either the repair and replacement reserve, or actually repair and replacement projects that will that are needed by that by each utility. One thing that was pointed out in the transmittal for both water and wastewater, they both have substantial amount of debt, and the primary objective in this budget cycle is to return the two enterprise funds so that their debt ratios are in compliance with our debt obligations of three different revenue bonds, nineteen ninety-eight, two thousand five, and two thousand and seven, which apply to both of the utilities, as well as a state revolving loan fund for the wastewater fund that was primarily used to fund the upgrade and required improvements to the plant. The bottom line, I have some of these items highlighted. The deficiency in operating cash, that's how much more the water utility will have to generate to get to the ninety days of reserves, and the four and a half million dollars is what the deficiency is that the wastewater fund needs to do. One thing that's not on here is that the the seventy-five million dollar loan that we have with state revolving fund actually requires us to, over ten years, set aside another reserve to pay for the final year of the debt. So we have a four and a half, about a four and a half million dollar annual payment that the Department of Water Resources is requiring us to set money aside for over the next ten years, and we're already two years into it. So in addition to that operating reserve, we'll also have to find a way to fund a four and a half million dollars debt service reserve to pay for that last year of the obligation. So this is just one component of a couple of different reserves that we'll have to set up for wastewater. For electric, by the end of the cycle, the projection is that we'll still have about eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars needed more to reach our targeted operating reserve level. That targeted reserve level is based on a council policy, and it's not just a ninety-day reserve. It's it's a ninety-day reserve plus a few other things that are identified in the resolution. For solid waste, the projection is that it will have about eighty-four days of cash on hand by the end of the cycle. It has, it will have a rate review going on in the fall, and the reason that's not brought forward yet is so it doesn't conflict with the water and wastewater studies that are ongoing. In fact, hopefully, next meeting will bring back a request for a public hearing on water and wastewater. Solid waste is, has an application in with state for loan funding for the gas collection system. That's a requirement of them over the next eighteen months, I believe. So if we get that application, the review of rates will be different than if we don't get that application, which is one of the reasons why they're delaying the start of the the rate study. But assuming we get the loan and the required amount of increase in user fees, they'll have about eighty-four days out of ninety days available by the end of the cycle. The broadband, which is not really one of the major funds, will have about a hundred and eighty days, one hundred and fifty-nine days of cash on hand, and roughly a hundred and eighty thousand dollars of cash on hand. That will end up being the funding source on an ongoing basis to start paying back the loan that was used to for the startup of the broadband utility. I have a debt service ratio here, but there's the debt on the broadband, as I mentioned before. The outside debt will be extinguished by the end of the fifteen cycle. The next steps, the council has provided direction to do a fee and charge study during the 1315 cycle, so we can identify the charges that we don't receive full funding for from the activities we do, and to determine what level of service charge we want to have for all the various services that we charge for, and for things we don't charge for right now that we might want to consider charging for. The finance division will continue to look for revenue enhancement and expenditure efficiency opportunities. We will also continue working down the line for getting a long-term model that will supplement the two-year budget, so we can look a little bit beyond a two-year horizon to see what we can do for future cycles. In the major enterprise funds, there are two ongoing cost of service studies that will be brought back to you within the next few cycles, and hopefully to be implemented in the very beginning of the 1315 cycle. Solid waste will also have one that will probably be brought to you in the fall. That one is, like I said earlier, contingent on the recycle, the calorie recycle loan for the gas collection system. And we will continue to look for revenue expense opportunities, even in the enterprise funds, where we can find some efficiencies. There have been some that are identified in the book, longer term, that will help benefit the utilities in the long run. On a citywide basis, we have mentioned this before, that CalPERS has changed their methodology for determining rates. That will start in July of two thousand and fifteen. Having a long-range model will help us identify how we can tackle that on a consistent and well-thought-out manner. And then, starting in two thousand and fourteen, we'll have to be able to show the federal government that we're monitoring and implementing the Affordable Care Act, so that we don't get fines. Fines could range up to two thousand dollars per employee if we don't follow their role. So two thousand dollars times five hundred employees is something we don't really want to do, so. And then that concludes my. And then that concludes my presentation. Laurel and I are available for questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Costa?
Thank you, Marilyn. Thank you, Mr. Wilkie and City Administrator, for your long, torturous days getting this prepared. I know it's a lot of work and for staff as well. I know you guys put in tremendous amounts of work, and to see a balanced budget that's bound and it looks fantastic is really great for council. So I wanted to say thank you for that. In regards to the public comment earlier this evening, however, was tonight going to be the night that we discussed that victim's advocate position being funded or defunded?
That's a council prerogative. I believe at the May seventh meeting, we brought that up, and there was no real direction given to us at that point in time to add it. So it is not currently part of the budget, so.
So if we pass this budget at this point, that item will not be discussed at a future meeting?
There's always an opportunity for that. The funding that happened in eleven thirteen cycle was off-budget because of the, the reason it was off-budget was because the grant funding that we received, that we had received for thirteen straight years, we didn't get a fourteenth year. So the interim was to provide for a easy end-of-cycle cutoff for that funding, which included just another six months' worth of funding that position. But it was in recognition of that fact that we had thirteen years of a good run for a position that was really, most agencies don't get more than two or three renewals. So we got thirteen renewals, which was pretty much unheard of in talking with Chief Dabney at the time. There is an opportunity when another grant comes by. There are grants for this. I've talked to the chief about reapplying the next time that that is an opportunity, so.
Okay. Now, what I did also notice was on the chopping block at that time to be defunded was the library literacy program. Is that correct?
Yes. And for the same reason it has always been funded by either public library funding. The only time it was ever funded by the general fund was when they came to request the monies in latter half of the thirteen, eleven thirteen cycle.
But in this current bound budget, there is a line item for point four of a full-time employee?
Point zero four, yeah.
Oh, point zero four.
Yeah, yeah. And the funding for the position is actually in a whole separate fund, which still exists, and they will continue to try to fund that with additional sources. And that would, and a vast majority of that position is in that other fund. The point seven one that was being funded is in that literacy grant, which is separate from the rest of the library.
Right. But that point zero four is almost like a placeholder, in essence, that it's a position within the library's organizational chart?
Yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that for public. I was aware of that, but I just wanted to make sure, because I feel like there's going to be some questions in regards to the victim advocate position, because it was on the list with this position, but it is being handled in a different way. And that is, the information is in the budget. It's up to council if you want more explanation. I just wanted to clarify that. So the biggest thing for me was on page A three, and that was the transmittal letter from our city administrator, where it says, "City revenue projections will not keep pace with future expenditures needed to maintain present-day service levels into the future." So although we have a balanced budget sitting before us, there are challenges ahead of us as well, and we're very aware of that. And I think staff is doing the right thing in coming up with strategies now that we'll be experiencing in two years from now. And then they're, further they're out because of some of these CalPERS increases in particular. I mean, when you look at the number, almost two million dollars of takeaways from state mandates and the other state takeaways. I mean, you know, two million dollars is this huge number that we weren't expecting necessarily to have taken away, and now we're having to deal with the aftermath. So when I'm, and I'm saying this again, the folks from the public left, and I know that there was some confusion, so I, my apologies to them. But when it, when that item came before us at the previous meeting on May seventh, you know, the library folks know how passionate I've been about the library and the literacy funding. I've been fighting for that as well, and I know you guys had tons of people show up when we decided to refund that for that short period of time. You know, I'm faced with, with the issue of really, there may be future cuts, and that we haven't seen the worst of it. And because of that, unfortunately, funding those programs just aren't on our purview, in my opinion, at this time. So I don't have any specific questions right now, although I may have some, but thank you.
Anyone else have a question for Brad before I open it to public comment? Okay, Brad, thank you. And now we'll have public comment. This is your opportunity to discuss something on the budget with us, if you would like. Anybody out there interested? For those of you at home, there are still people here. They're all just hiding in the back.
I'm the Director of the Lompoc Museum, and I'm here with Alice Dowell, our Board President. And we just wanted to take this opportunity to thank the council for its past and continuing support of the Lompoc Museum. And we're not going to read the letter, that's why we've given it to you, but just like to summarize a few things. The museum has been around since nineteen sixty-nine, and since that time, we've had a variety of programs, including our permanent and rotating exhibits, which, in the former Carnegie Library Building, as you all know, the museum was established with the donation of the Clarence Roof Collection to the city in nineteen sixty-nine. And the museum was formed to display and care for that collection, which we have continued to do. In addition to our permanent and rotating exhibits, we have school and group tour programs and public programs. We participate in community events like the Fourth of July Celebration that's coming up, as well as the Old Town Market. And also, we have programs at the Stone Pine Hall facility, including one I'd like to remind you or tell you about if you didn't see it in the newspaper. Today, on the Point Conception Lighthouse, there's going to be a slide presentation and talk on Thursday night at Stone Pine Hall at seven o'clock. I invite everyone to come to that. And also this summer, we're going to have a special, our exhibit for the summer is the Oral History Project, which many of the community have been supporting. It started back in the late nineteen seventies, a joint project with the Historical Society, where about forty members of the community were interviewed extensively. And over the last two years, we've been working with a very capable manager, project manager, Patricia Sizani, who has been working to transcribe those oral histories and move them on to more stable media. And so we're going to have that this summer, so we're very excited about that. And in recent years, also a summary, so everyone probably knows, we've talked about this before, in recent years, we've retired the mortgage on Stone Pine Hall. We're very excited about that. That facility was acquired when the First Church of Christ Scientist dissolved, and the building is right next door to the museum, making it an ideal location for these kind of public programs like the Point Conception Lighthouse. In addition to our use of the building, we've made it available to community organizations, and just four, five, four regular community groups who use it every month combined to use that building one hundred and eighty days last year. So we're very excited at how much use the building is getting. And we do this with a, with a volunteer corps, really, of twenty-two docents and eleven board members who staff the front desk. The board does this on weekends and helps with public programs. And we only have two staff members, myself and our administrative assistant, who combine for a one and a half FTE. So we think we do a lot, and we, and we're excited. We're getting six new docents this month who are completing our training program, which represents a considerable increase for us, so we're very excited about that. So, and in addition, so I've been talking about everything we've been doing, and we do that with your support, and we appreciate that. And we also remain one of the big cheerleaders for the community. When people come into town, we're always very positive. We're happy to share everything we know about the history of our town and also direct them to local businesses. You know, we get asked all the time, where's a good place to eat? And we, of course, we tend to, we like to champion the downtown area because that's where we are. But we've continued to see ourselves as kind of a, just a cheerleader for the city. We love Lompoc, and we love the museum and the history it represents. And that's, I just wanted to thank you very much for your continued support. And I know Mr. Starbuck was over there just last month. I think Alice was hosting that, one of your meetings with the public, and I'm sorry I had to miss that for an award ceremony, so.
Very important award ceremony for your daughter.
Well, and I was there again tonight for another one. So I'm kind of happy in two days, this'll all be over for a while, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Dr. Rankin?
Come on back. I think you've got two questions.
Okay.
Councilmember Lingle?
How is your landscaping coming?
Well, we've got the plan done, and unfortunately, we just received word from, we had, we had applied to the Schumash Foundation for a grant for the hardscape. And we just received word that that was not funded. They said that there was a number of reasons it could have been, but none of it was that there's anything wrong with the proposal. It might have just been the wrong time, that they had run out of money or something. So we've already been talking about how, where we're going to apply next or break it up into other pieces. We did receive last year, two thousand dollars from the Lompoc Valley in Bloom as a result of their hay bales and cocktails. And I believe we're anticipating getting a, perhaps a five hundred dollar maybe donation this, from this year's revenues. And we're, with that, we're going to do the Victorian Corner, we are calling it, right around the Carnegie Building. That's kind of been cut off into a separate little project that we think is doable with those funds that we already have. We're still wanting to go for a larger grant that will do more of the hardscape, because it's, it's just more efficient to do it all at once. So that's where we are on that. We're going to apply for more grants, or we're going to keep working on it. We did get a one hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant from the Wood Claysons Foundation in December for upgrades to Stone Pine Hall. That includes structural repairs, and we're wanting to stretch that as far as we can, obviously, and we're hoping to get, we already have plans for handicapped accessibility, both in a ramp that comes, will come from the parking lot in the back to that side door where it'll be widened, and then also a handicapped accessible restroom in the building. So we have that grant where we've got, and we're waiting for bids on the work right now. So we have a couple of projects, one funded, one with little pieces has been funded, and we're still working on that.
Councilmember Costa?
I actually have a question for staff. Thank you.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
My question is, the contract with the, I know that right now we're putting it in the budget as something to potentially be funded, but when are we actually reviewing contracts, such as the one with the museum or with the chamber?
The chamber contract is coming up on, I believe, in the next meeting for a review. The museum, I don't believe, is technically really a contract, because it's a donation for operations. They do have a contract, I believe, because they rent a facility that is city-owned, but the contribution is not tied to that contract, I believe.
It's not tied to any deliverables at all?
They do, they do provide us budget information to go along with the justification for what they ask for in the budget, but the amounts that we provide to them hasn't changed for, I think, three budget cycles. But they do provide us tax return, their budget for operations, and we do have that as part of the package of materials for this budget cycle.
City Administrator, did you have anything to add to that?
Just to add to what Mr. Wilkie advised you, it's considered a contribution, and the two-year contribution is one hundred and seventeen thousand.
That's the two-year amount?
Yes.
Okay. I think, I think it goes without saying, you know, a lot of what we're looking at right now is, again, anticipating the cuts. So for me, especially with the chamber contract, I say that in anticipation that's coming up soon, is I really want to focus on getting the Bing Farbuck, looking at deliverables. I think, I understand it's a contribution. I've also been very supportive of the museum for my time in office, but I think it's time for us to really start looking, you know, with some scrutiny at some of these things and really figuring out if there are certain things that need to be lowered or defunded, not at this time, because we do have this balanced budget, but just something for council to consider. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Anybody else out there want to talk to us? Last chance. Going once, going twice, gone. Okay. Oral communication is closed. We're coming back to council for discussion and questions. Councilmember Holm.
I don't have any questions. It's interesting, thinking about the airport, and we want to know about skydivers, and it's showing that it runs about twenty-one thousand, four hundred dollars a year from that lease in that building. But has anybody ever been down in that building when all the skydivers are in, it's packed full? And it'd be interesting to get an idea how many a weekend or how many we got coming in, because they also go downtown and buy groceries, go buy food and other things. So the numbers, and they love it. I went down there, I do a job down there, I talk to them, that's the greatest event they can. They can see all over the valley, and they enjoy it so much. But it's kind of interesting with that kind of income, but it's also when you're buying. So we're talking about bringing people to Lompoc, and that facility's doing it.
And there's also, compared to the income from the hangar rental, the large income is from the fuel purchase, because they account for a major share of our Jet A purchase for their, their current plane. Okay, let's start from the right, and we'll see if anybody has questions or comments. We'll come around once. Bob, you want to start?
The contributions we have for the Aquatic Center and the Dewey Center, I know, you know, it's status quo right now, that's five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And maybe this is either Mr. Wilkie or Ms. Barcelona, the Anderson Recreation Center, do we own that building outright?
Yes.
We own that building outright. Again, we're not going to do anything right now, but we, I think we need to start looking at the five hundred and fifty thousand dollars we're putting in every two years on these two centers and maybe work on a five-year plan where they can become self-sustaining. One of the things I'm thinking about is, we really have two community centers. We have the Dewey Center and the Anderson Recreation Center. Why? Well, we've had the Anderson Recreation Center for years, but is it time that we look at that and either sell it, try to give rid of some of our subsidy to the Dewey Center, or maybe rent it out, lease it out, and try to get that one hundred and thirty thousand dollars that we put in every year back to it? So that's something I'd like the staff to start looking at. Do we really need the two centers? And if not, maybe looking at something we can do with the Anderson Recreation Center, lease it, sell it, whatever else. And then the Aquatic Center, I know, Ms. Plummer, you guys are doing a great job, you really are, but, and I believe we're going to start having revenues coming in now that we've got the timing device, we're going to start having meets and continue doing a good job, and maybe we can look at a plan where we, at some point, again, reduce the subsidies and maybe over a period of time, we can completely eliminate them. But you are, you guys are doing a good job. I admire you for it. Is it, Mr. Mayor?
Well, kind of ironic, on the same line here, now that we have a budget that's balanced, this is the time, I think, that staff and council, we need to sit back and look for our efficiencies, our number-three priority, what can we do better, what can we trim? And that's the direction I'm thinking about looking right now, so I agree.
I'm really pleased to see the budget, that it is a balanced budget. Things are tough, because a lot of things looking up, looking for the good coming down the road, and what's, what is happening. And like Bob talked about, the Aquatic Center, there can be people coming in and using that center that we haven't been able to use, have no idea what that revenue will be, but it's going to be interesting this next year what that'll be. Things are coming to town, and we got a balanced budget now. What we need to do is, just like you said, take a look at it now, sense about, is there any change we can do as we go into the future? But also, it's now seeing what we can do with what's coming to town and how we're going to handle it.
Thank you, Marilyn. I wanted to give a quick shout-out to Mr. Wilkie, because I think it's, it's important to note that we were very conservative in our projections of revenue. And I state this, and I've stated this many times, because we did something-
And I state this, and I've stated this many times, because we did something that the state often does not do, because a lot of times they overestimate the revenues that they'll receive, and that puts them in a really tough situation.
Did you say that they occasionally do that?
They have historically done that. I'm pretty sure every budget cycle since I've been alive. And so that's why we're, you know, at the state level in such a tough fiscal situation. So for me, it's, it's enlightening to see that a government agency is really doing things the right way in regards to estimating revenues and being realistic about projections of both revenues and expenditures. So I appreciate that, because it's very easy to try to make everybody happy and say, you know, maybe we'll get a 10% increase in sales tax or something. But we all know that that's not realistic. And so what this sets us up to do is actually, I think we are going to exceed those expectations, even if it's just slightly, because we are seeing so many economic development projects coming to fruition in this short period of time. So I'm excited to, to see how that plays out. Hopefully we'll have a little bit more money than we had anticipated. Really quickly, though, about the Aquatic Center, this is so minor, and I know it would be such a small source of revenue, but why haven't we gotten the snack bar started? Wasn't that like a big discussion about having a snack bar in there and that was a small source of revenue?
They've been working on it. I know they've had meetings with the county health department.
Okay, last I heard, it's stagnated. So let's do what we can do to get that revenue. It's small and it's minor, but it shows that we're trying everything. And that leads me to my last point, which is in regards to not just efficiencies, which is one side, but innovation, which I think is the other. I would say, you know, for you and your respective departments, for the public with suggestions, let's really try to push the boundaries. I wish I was an expert in every one of your departments and I can try to come up with good solutions, but I think that'd be much easier for you to do than myself. So push the boundaries as much as you can in regards to understanding that we have tough times to come and we really need to come up with ways as a city, as a city that is working together as all departments under one roof, as we are, we need to come up with long-term solutions. And if, if somebody gets upset that you're pushing the envelope too far, just blame me, that's okay, you can come talk to me about that. But I think that's all I have for now, thank you.
Well, I think, number one, Chief Laurel, great job. I, you know, I'm here most days and I see how much time you guys have put into this. I've seen the piles of hair on the floor in the office, where it was ripped out in large clumps by every, by all participants. And, you know, it's really easy when revenues are going up. And it should have been really easy because our revenues went up substantially, our economic development effort has been very successful. As all of you can see, just looking around town, we have many, many stores that are now occupied. We've had eight consecutive quarters of sales tax increases, eight. That means that you have a quarter-on-quarter improvement if you do it eight times. And they haven't been 1% or 2%, most of them have been double-digit. We owe a great debt of thanks to all the people of the city of Lompoc who have made an effort to shop here and spend their dollars here in support of our city. So all you guys out there watching at home, thank you very much. We are in a truly good position with economic development because we solved our problems two years ago. We created a mechanism where businesses that want to come here have certainty and they have a very short timeframe. And I want to, I'll illustrate two of them, just so you understand how valuable this is. We just opened a Papa John's Pizza, and it was opened by a senior executive of the corporation who decided to go out on his own. And he has opened locations for them all over the Midwest. And I happened to go by and chat with him and he, and I said, you know, are we doing okay for you? How are we doing? He said, this is the best place we have ever opened a restaurant. Everybody at the city was helping us. And he said, and my contractor will tell you the same thing. And I said, will you write a letter? And he said, yes. Okay? And they opened it from purchasing the building to selling a pizza in less than 90 days. And if you've ever done a business, that's rocket speed. And the second one I would share with you is our new Chrysler dealership. We worked with them on using the lot across the street a year and a half ago, and it got them thinking about it. And, you know, they came to us and said, is there any way we can possibly use that? And staff said, well, yeah, we can write you a conditional use, a temporary use permit, and that's $146.12. And, you know, we'll bring you some free wood chips and you can sell cars. And that worked for about three months until they didn't have enough cars to fill it up and they were done with it. But they started thinking about it. And then in August of last year, they came to us and they began the process. And this was a undeveloped parcel, so it had to go through a planning process. So it went through the Development Review Board, it went through the Planning Commission, it came to the council, it got council approval. They fell behind, it took them three weeks to get their paperwork done. They filed for their building permit, they built it. I think it was paved last week. They will open in two weeks. Nowhere else in California would you get a build, a new business from vacant land through the development process between August and the 20th of 15th or 20th of June. It's not going to happen. So that's the type of thing that we are able to do. And I was talking to a friend down south today, he's in Riverside, he said, hey, I've read a couple articles about how quick you guys get projects done up there. And I'm going, wow, you know, we're famous over a wide area. So we're ideally positioned to move forward and develop more things. I agree with what's been said here with regard to thinking a little bit further outside the box on some of our opportunities, particularly, I think, because I'm a business guy, and if you gave me that pool, I'm pretty sure I could make some money on it. So I think our, our next step going forward over the next two years is to get that to be self-sustaining. The Anderson Rec Center, I watched the numbers and we actually rent it more than we rent the Dewey Center. I think the Dewey Center is vastly underutilized, and I believe what I believed two years ago, that we need to hire a professional company to come in and manage that center who has banquet and catering experience to capitalize on that beautiful facility. And I, I haven't changed my opinion a year down the road. The chamber contract is always some kind of an issue, but we need to understand that the bulk of what we're paying for is advertising. And by having them do it, we get 10% for free because they don't, they get a 10% discount, which they then reinvest on our behalf in more advertising. We will be having in the near future a tourism, business, investment district coming to the council for review, which should also help us fill more hotel rooms, as well as the pending launch this summer of the first SpaceX missile, which will be one every other month going forward. They have six in the queue right now. And for those of you who saw that they were contemplating putting a launch pad in Texas, that's to augment Florida. Those are, those are equatorial launches. This is their only facility for polar launches. And then we will also be having the benefits of the Hancock Police and Fire Facility coming onboard. The wine industry continues to grow. If you've looked at the old Greco building, you'll notice that a very nice patio is appearing on the south side on 246, and that will accommodate five more tasting rooms. We are happy to have Falla's Department Store joining us. They're, they bought a building in another community and they've spent seven months trying to get permission to move into the building that they own. In Lompoc, they came to us and I think they remodeled in about 65 days and they just started hiring and they will be bringing in merchandise and fixtures over the next couple of weeks. So again, we facilitated them, they followed all the rules, they did all the right things, but we got it done quickly. And that's extremely valuable. Both of the housing tracts that are here in Lompoc are selling at the rate of about two a week now. And so we expect to see that to continue to go forward. So all of the things that the council and the city administrator and the city staff and all of you out there have done to make our, our city go forward in a more rapid and positive direction are being successful. What we are suffering with, and you, you saw it in Brad's numbers, is that in this two-year budget, the state's going to fleece us for another $1.9 million. So most of what we've been able to accomplish, sadly, the state has stolen from us. Happily, we accomplished it, or we would be sitting here now trying to figure out how to cut our budget by $2 million. And I truly don't know where we would cut it, because we've, we're pretty lean and mean now, no, lean and friendly. And that trend is going to consider, continue, and the next two-year budget, it's going to be a similar number, and the budget after that, it's going to be a really big number. So those are the things that we have to work diligently on now. But our train's already rolling down the track and there are other cities that are now going, oh my God, we got to do something. And we already did it. So we're good and we're humble, what more can I say? I think those are all the points I want to cover. I'm satisfied with the budget. I think we've had great hearings going forward where we've discussed this and we probably know our budget better than almost any other city council. I was talking to someone from another city a while back and they said, well, you know, I really don't read it. Do you read that thing? Yeah, pretty much cover to cover every time, so.
Make a motion.
Make a motion? Okay. Did you have something else to say, or? Huh? No? Yeah? Make a motion?
I'll make my suggestion, Dr. DeMosh, in a second.
Oh, okay. Uh, let's see. Hmm, this is, okay. I guess I desire, I move that we adopt the draft-proposed fiscal year 2013-15 by annual budget at this meeting and approve resolution number 5853/13, adopting municipal budget for fiscal years 2013 and 2015. Who wants to second?
I'll second.
Okay.
And then Marilyn, I was curious, if we think it would be prudent to write a letter to our local representatives at the state level, giving them a soundbite? Because this is the type of information that they look for, are these specific numbers. So we can show them, particularly just in this budget cycle, 1.9 million, which is a whatever percentage of our general fund, and then what we see coming down the pike in regards to additional, and I know sometimes it doesn't do anything, but a lot of times what you can do is if you can give one of them a soundbite, they can use that in future discussions to try to stop future takeaways. So I think it might be prudent for us to write a letter and send that off.
I would be delighted. Just, the only thing you'd have to do is probably hold me back just a little. So I will consider that a mandate, to write the letter. Everybody good with that?
Yep.
Yep, yep, yep.
You going to share it with us before you send it?
No, I'll share it with the mayor pro tem. She's going to hold me back a little. Okay, any other discussion on this? Last chance, speak now or forever hold your peace. Okay, let's go for a vote. Okay, we got to do it again. Dwayne, Dwayne, Dwayne fumbled the button. Okay, and that passes 5-0. And now for the round of applause. Oh, come on. Nothing? Okay. Oral communications. Who out there would like to take two minutes to come and talk to us? Seeing no one rise, we'll close oral communications. Counsel requests comments, meeting reports at all, starting from the left. You got to say that. You can't, you can't shake your head, it doesn't record.
Nothing to report.
Okay.
I have nothing to report, but I want to talk to, talk to the fire chief when he talks about our truck going down and putting over that fire. I don't know if everybody paid attention, that area that's burning right now is 80 years in the process. Just south of Lompoc is 65 to 70 years of no fires. So that's where we're at in this county, so the fire danger is out there, so just tell everybody what's going on. The other thing I would say, if anybody is going anywhere and has anybody to talk to and wants to have some information about what Lompoc has to offer, Teresa Galvin put together something I had for a gentleman coming up here, and it has hotels, it has restaurants, it has anything else you want to know, and some one of the projections of the Aquatic Center, I mean, I mean, the center out in Hancock. So if you have it and you're going someplace, you want to take it out, she has put together a real nice, and the gentleman I had in here Saturday loved what he's seen, and he may be back and open a restaurant, and we do have a hotel coming.
I'm not going to make any reports. I do want to just mention that I was at the Memorial Day service up at the park on Memorial Day, American Legion did a really great job up there. The other thing I wanted to do is, I want to get us back on track now with the budget done. Code enforcement, report was due to council in February on it, and we've kind of prolonged it out till now, but this was in relation to our proactive versus reactive. I know that when we discussed it before, we were looking for a status of what we were doing in warning letters, what, you know, it's one of our priorities as a council, and I'm lost on it, so if I could get some kind of follow-on later on with it.
Let's see, on May 22nd, May 23rd, I was at a NCPA meeting in Healsburg. The city did pave my mileage and my hotel rooms.
I attended a number of meetings and events. Probably the most exciting one was speaking to a bunch of third graders because I got these really cool cards back from them. I showed them to my wife this morning and she was laughing when I left the house. I think they were most impressed by how tall I was and that I once had a pet dinosaur. I didn't have anything at city expense. I think we're doing well and moving forward, and thank goodness the budget is done. We will not, I repeat, not, be taking on anything new and exciting for two weeks so that the staff can breathe out. Our, our, yeah, we have a meeting, but we're not taking on anything new for two weeks. We're going to give, we're going to have peace and quiet, and I think maybe a couple extra days off for everybody. So thanks to everybody who worked so hard on the budget. And the council that worked hard to be cooperative and, and get the plan right at the beginning, so we weren't making changes at the end. And having said that, and I don't see any other lights, we are therefore adjourned to a regular meeting at 7 o'clock PM on June 18th, except it won't be at 7, it'll probably be at 6:00 or 5:30. Thank you all for coming. Thank you all for coming.[1394.33]